Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the village board meeting of March 9th, 2015. Just a reminder, there's an emergency, we exit process section, which is at the back of the building. Go to your vehicle, please. Do not leave until subject to my emergency service personnel. Also, also in mind, this is an announcement from the building, so if you must, most do it someplace else, not in the building. Now, let's play.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Just one approval tonight for the board meeting minutes of February 23rd, 2015.
Motion.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
On the favor.
Aye.
Okay. The treasurer is out for the habit tip replacement, so hopefully you'll see him next time around.
Yes.
Bill's for the period total of $549,583.53.
Top five bills, Cronin and Cronin, $228,000 for multiple tax actuaries, which were approved at the last meeting. PSEGli, $17,674.94 for riding village-wide. Russell Reed, $12,184.20 for sludge removal. H2M, $10,196 for sewer plant retainer and multiple projects. And Devo, $8,031 for programming and setting up for the meter lots. For a total of $276,086,14 cents. You have approval, please.
Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second.
All favoring?
Aye.
Okay.
And we do have a couple of budget transfers. We're beginning to clean up for year end, so have approval to happy transfers as attached.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public hearings.
Okay. Excuse me. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing be held on Monday, March 9th, 2015, 14 Baker Street, Patchogue, New York. Try the village board of trustees of the incorporated village of Patchogue to amend section 15-2 of chapter 15 of Village Code to add and remove certain parcels from the business security district. Copy of this proposal of laws on cloud of the office of village clerk. That's a public hearing, any person interested will be given the opportunity to be heard. And those are parcels.
The parcels relate to new village development. The two of those?
Okay. Coming off of the bid tax is 93 West Main Street, 38 Lake Street, 10 Havens Avenue, 27 and 29 Havens, 10 Lake Street, 5 Net, 9 and 15 West Main, and 17 West Main. And then added, which I don't have addresses for at this point, but they are on New Village.
Big John.
Okay. Okay, excuse me. Added will be parcels 1, 2, 3, 5, 6, 7, 8, 1, 1, and 2 in District 2 of 4, 9, 10-1. Doesn't mean anything to anybody at this point, but they are all New Villages added.
What they did was, do I know what I'm explaining what the process is?
Yeah, this is the, business improvement district was founded in 1991, and if under the code, it has to designate which business property is going to be included in that. Those were all commercial properties that were originally part of the bid, obviously then subject to the bid tax. Once portions of those properties that are being deleted became residential properties, they may no longer associate to the bid. But would normally be a military change, except the creation of the bid has it as an amendment to the actual code, so we're doing it by public hearing. So we're taking out the former commercial properties that now became residential, and we're re-putting in new tax map numbers due to the new designations in New Village, the commercial parcels, so they'll be in.
Essentially, we can consolidate the property into the director.
Correct. We cleaned it up to what is actually, it's subject to a bid tax or what's not.
Need a question by the board? Question by the public? Motion to accept is presented.
Motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Requested approval for Michael Jennifer Musante, owners of the property located at 529 South Ocean Avenue, to contact H2N for conceptual approval and add a district sewer connection with referral to the village by H2N. H2N is our engineers, and 529, our residents, has to be with the sewer hookup. It's a form of motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Requested approval for Ray O'Wong Chen, owner of the property at 387 East Main Street, to contact H2N for conceptual approval from add a district sewer connection with referral to the village by H2N. And actually, they're add a village, add a district.
Correct.
Add a district, add a village, and it's the East Main Street Sewer Commission. That's a form of motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. A resolution to reduce the assessed value of 29 Jennings Avenue to land in garage only for the tax year 2015. This is the house on Jennings just north of the firehouse that was destroyed. Basically, it's no more than a house anymore, but they do have a garage, they do have land. A motion to reduce the assessed value of Jennings.
Motion.
Well, second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Is that, there was a question of when that was going to be as far as?
Yeah, that was during the tax periods. Yeah.
Yes.
The issue is, is because it happened after January 1st, it can't, it can only be done by board resolution. So this is, and a resolution to reduce the assessed value of 564 South Ocean Avenue, land only for the 2015 tax year, this was super, so outstanding damage, and they just recently asked for same. Again, they're not living in a home, if they've been waiting for New York rising, to rise, they're dead, do something. Just amazing. Is there something? Motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Smith.
Mr. Smith. So mayor, trustees, Mr. Smith. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Dennis Smith with a very brief business improvement district report tonight. It's brief for one reason, being the cameras. Unfortunately, with the weather over the last two weeks, either being frigid cold or bluster and stormy, we were not able to do anything new with cameras. We still had the two of them running at the theater. The hope was to get the one on the four corners going. Unfortunately, couldn't get to that. I am going to meet with worldwide either this Wednesday or Thursday, we're going to scope that out, and hopefully by the next, we'll be able to have that game up and running. And if you get real lucky, there is a, there is a way to stream it, and we're looking to see how much, what that would take, how much bandwidth it would use, and how much memory it would encompass. I'm also working with Susan Thompson for a location for a camera in the Church Street parking lot. She's 22 West Main Street. That building backs all the way to the Church Street parking lot.
That's Gino's, correct?
It's Gino's. Just the Gino's, yeah. Gino's building, that whole, I think, stuff for Patchogue and ends with Gino's. But her building goes all the way to the Church Street parking lot, so if I'm able to work something out with her, and then get connectivity from one of the retail units that's on the back, that would be the location that I'd be looking to put the Church Street block camera on. And what that would do would give you a full scope of pretty much from the back of the new German Bavarian restaurant all the way around to the Chinese restaurant on South Ocean Avenue. So it's an ideal location if we can get it done. The village has purchased a computer, it's on order, and that's going to facilitate the memory with the cameras as we add them on, because you've only got so much capacity with each unit, with each location. This will give us the capacity to hold for 30, 40 days with moments we feel we do want to hold the memory for. The parking guide I'm going to talk about briefly, I think it's coming out great. I know Deputy Mayor Krueger had sent me a copy of that, that Lauren Monti had finished up. I think there's a few titles we have to look at. Yeah, looks good. I'll let you talk about it.
It's coming.
But it looks good. It looks good, and I think it's really going to serve the purpose that we had set out for it to do. Tomorrow, the bid board meeting, we're going to vote on, well, the bid board's going to vote on the 2015-16 budget. It's a $157,400 budget for tax revenues. It's actually a lot better than what was the year before, because a lot of the commercial properties have come back on the bid rolls. The services will remain. We've actually added a new line, we've added a line for Plaza Cinema. There were another entity, 501(c)(3). We're looking to help them promote their, you know, their movies back along Terry Street, so we put that one on, we've added $2,500 to that. We've kept everything else that we normally have, and no one felt like we should be able to do everything that we've been doing right along. The last thing I have is the website that we have, the bid website, patchoguebid.com. We're in the process of revamping that, it's just about completed. It's got a new look, it's got much more information on, and I think it looks a heck of a lot better. It's even got a spot that includes some of the downtown bakeries on Main Street and the South Ocean Avenue. It looks a lot better, and I think it's going to serve a good purpose. Unless there's any questions for me, and that's all that I have.
Thanks, Dan.
He just asked me to read a couple of events that the Chamber is sponsoring. On Tuesday, March 19th, Outstanding Woman of Brookhaven Recognition Awards, 7:00 p.m. at the Brookhaven Town Hall Auditorium. Lori Belmonte, our own Lori Belmonte, of the Colony Shop will be honored as the Outstanding Woman of the Year. Forward, thank you.
It's Thursday night, not Tuesday.
Thursday the 19th, right?
Yeah. Yes, Thursday.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, it says on here.
Tuesday's the 17th.
Accurate reading on what. So it's.
Thursday.
It's Thursday the 19th.
Thursday the 19th. Check me on the next one.
Okay.
Saturday, March 20th, Blum's Ribbon Cutting to celebrate the end of the.
The 21st, 21st.
Throw it away.
Is he not here because he's got a fever?
Okay, Saturday, March 21st.
He was so set up.
I didn't check. Saturday, March 21st, Blum's Ribbon Cutting to celebrate their newly renovated store, 11:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. It should be a very exciting time. Everyone's invited. Sunday, March 22nd.
Yes.
St. Patrick's Day Parade, and May the Road Rise to Meekie, the 5K race. The race begins at 11:55, and the parade immediately follows thereafter at noon. Please note, this reflects a time change to accommodate the congregation church. Bill Hilton has an order to go.
Yes. Well, I have a different day, but that's.
Okay. Wednesday, March 25th, does that work? Chamber Network meeting at the Patchogue Theater at 8:00 a.m. Event includes bagel breakfast from Goldberg's Deli and tour of the theater from Chris Coppa Bianca. And that's it. Thank you, Tom, and thank you, David, for giving me lots of beautiful days.
What you do, you do great work. David just wanted to make sure that you never took over his job.
No worries. I can stay up that late.
Yeah. Thank you, mayor. Like to thank Dion, good story in the advance, sorry, when the, sorry, story of news day. Thank you. We got a good response to that, correct?
Today, just alone today, there was $5,300 collected through the amnesty program. $3,300 in online and credit cards.
So power of the press. Thank you to all the press, to pay to do that. And we have, as Dennis mentioned before, it's a work in progress, but hopefully within the next few weeks, we'll have these in restaurants and stores all over the village. Is that correct, Dennis? That's what we did?
Yes, yeah. To equip the restaurants, retail stores, library, theater, village hall.
Right. So it's got some information on the front and back, how to use the machine, then inside is a colored map of all the parking and locations where parking meters are. So it should be soon, we should get it there. The meters are working well. We're working on some areas of adjustment. You're going to be able to extend your time at any meter. The meters, there's an issue with communication, I think I might have mentioned it last time, and so if you park in a parking lot, you have to pay in the parking lot. But if you want to extend your time, you can extend it any meter, so if there's, you know, if somebody comes into the Colony Shop and they want to extend, they don't have to go in the back, they can go right down. You've got a meter almost right in front of your store, right?
Just before.
Yeah, they can do that. Also, we're working with the other companies.
I'm sorry, Jack, but that's been saying that, in other words, because it used to be the way my student parking lot, you had to re-up out of parking lot.
No, you're going to be able to re-up on anywhere if you're a parking lot, vice versa.
Those have done yet.
Not done yet.
It's not done yet.
The other thing is, we're going to be working with the company that does the smartphone payments, and stores will be able to have their own accounts and pay for other people's parking. So a customer comes into your place, Mark?
Yeah.
And they say, look, it'll be another half hour to park, you can go on your account if you like, and instead of giving them a quarter out of the machine, you can go on your phone and increase their time.
Really?
Yeah.
Is that now?
Not yet.
Oh.
Not yet. We're going to be doing that, okay? So we're going to work on that.
Mark, I heard a rumor that Apple is trying to pay station fee to the owners.
Oh, really? Maybe we can get them as an app on your phone.
You got the app.
Yeah, oh, you got the app. Okay, good, good. I think that's about it on parking. Anything else coming up, mayor, about parking? I don't think so. So I'm going to talk about the Patchogue Theater again, like I always do. If anybody had the good luck to be at Patchogue Theater on Saturday night to see Janice Ian and Tom Paxton, you saw a great show. Trusty Keys was there.
Excellent show.
It was a fabulous show, good old folk, good old folk music, great crowd.
It was a good crowd, yeah, they were sitting up on the balcony.
Yeah, very good crowd, and two very, very talented artists on that stage, and, you know. And then yesterday, again, Chaz Palmentieri's of Bronx Tale.
It's great.
You couldn't see a better show. I know, you know, people say, oh, well, the theater, they're not getting the big acts or anything like that. Well, that was a sold-out show. That was a Knights of Columbus benefit. Chaz gave the knights a discounted rate, so they could make a little money for their, for their charities. So kudos to the Patchogue Theater once again for putting on some great shows, and if you were in the Village of Patchogue on Saturday afternoon, you were at the daytime Folk Festival, which I understand they had a very good crowd there, and then the Folk Festival lasted into the evening. So I just want to, once again, say thank you to the people at the theater, and thank you especially to the volunteers who spend their weekends making sure that our guests are comfortable in the theater. This Saturday night, Buckwheat Zidco, Louisiana's hottest Creole music, March 14th. On March 21st, celebrate Frank Sinatra's 100th birthday with Sinatra, My Sinatra Show. Susan Berner's Starshine, Talent Search is March 22nd. That is a really good show. They're, those are fun. Ever go, you've been to those?
Well, it'd be more funny if you spent the afternoon drinking with the Irish.
Yeah.
And then wandering into the board show.
But you would be surprised, the talent that is in this area. I mean, some of these people get up there and sing.
What time is that?
It starts at 3:00. So everybody will be warmed up for the parade. Tuned up. Sunday, the 29th of March, The Crystals and Shirley Austin Reeves, Up Close and Personal. Then the return of the Led Zeppelin experience, Hammer of the Gods. If you're a Led Zeppelin fan, you haven't seen them, go see them, they are great. That's April 4th. Mickey B comes in with his oldie spectacular on the 10th, and our old friend Dominic Chienezzi, a night of beautiful music on April 11th. He's an old friend of ours. On Sunday, April 12th, we have Mickey B presents a tribute to the stars of the Copa. We all remember the Copa, right? I do. Bobby Darren, Sam Cooke, Jackie Wilson, Supremes, Righteous Brothers, and The Temptations. And on Saturday, April 18th, the great Patty Lupone, singing by herself with a piano. Then the Pops in Patchogue, give my regards to Broadway on Sunday, the 19th, the afternoon show. Our old friend, Mr. Ronan Tyne on Saturday, 25th, that's the gala for the theater. On Sunday, the 26th of April, we have Assisted Living the Musical, How the Older Half Lives. That should be fun.
Is that how it works?
Was that?
That's how it works.
I don't know who that, no, I don't know who that is.
It's time.
Yeah. Saturday, May 2nd, Mickey B comes back and presents a salute to America. Ah, let's see, oh, here's a good one. Sunday, May 3rd, Let's Swing, the Artie Shaw Orchestra. If you like big band music, Joe, I saw that smile.
Yeah.
Have you ever seen? Go. You will be so happy you went.
Sure.
You will, it's a, it's a Sunday, May 3rd at 3:00 p.m. That's a great show. Then Sunday, the 31st, Pops in Patchogue, Musical Journey Through Europe. Friday, October 9th, Chris McDonald's Memories of Elvis in Concert. And stay tuned for all the other shows that are coming up, and I got to tell you, they're doing a great job over there. We were there yesterday afternoon, and there was a lot of happy people walking in and out of that theater. And they're all gearing up for next year to get new seats.
Yeah, but it's time next year to be in.
Yep, yep. So, and we're not, we're getting bigger seats, but we're not losing any seats.
Yeah, that's the game to come on.
Yeah, we might be gaining a few seats, so I guess it's the layout or whatever. So that's all I have about the theater tonight, but I would like to request, is that getting that time of year again? I would like to request approval for the residents of Island Avenue to hold their 18th Block Party on Saturday, July 18th, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight, with a rain date requested for July 25th. Like to weigh the uphold, move, motion.
Sorry.
All favor?
Aye.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Trusty Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, fellow board members, ladies and gentlemen. Just two very quick things tonight, requesting approval to increase the salary of William Zinta, who's a part-time electrician, to $38 an hour.
Motion.
That's a motion.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm requesting approval tonight to hire Cornell Co-op, Cornell Cooperative Extension to provide stormwater management, education, and guidance for the period of March 2015 to March 2016, and it costs not to exceed $22,000. Cornell Co-op, McCaffrey, Jared Holtzmark, and the Village of Patchogue work as a team now to do our EPA stormwater annual report, which is very difficult for us to do alone. So the best way to do something right is to get the people who do it best, and so Cornell Co-op is the best at this education and guidance, and so we're requesting approval to hire them, as I said, not to exceed $22,000.
That's a motion.
Well, they were instrumental in getting us through the last.
Yes, yes, so between them and McCaffrey, then as a team, it wasn't, without any one piece of those team, we were in deep trouble, so very, very well.
Yeah.
Money well spent. Money well spent, indeed, yeah.
Motion?
Motion.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I believe that's all I have.
Trusty Keys.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Evening, ladies and gentlemen. First on my agenda, I'd like to, after further review and careful consideration, you know, there's been much conversation about it, and we spoke about it again tonight, I'd like to make a motion to approve a traffic pattern for New Village with ingress into the property from Havens Avenue to Lake Street, and exit egress only from Oak Street and North Ocean Avenue.
So going in just one way?
So there's, just one way in and one way out.
Dennis, when I saw you here tonight, I said, I don't want to see the rat, this McAvoy.
Is that both ways to Havens?
One way to Havens. One way in, and then one way out.
Then out, out of Oak Street.
Out of Oak.
Oak Street where the traffic light is, go.
In on Lake.
Correct.
Out on Oak.
In on Lake, out on Oak, right.
And my concern has become in terms of going.
Well, you could also preserve the in and out of Havens, the south end.
Yes.
That would remain the same, as it is now. Right.
Havens, I say exactly what Havens is.
Yeah.
The concern about having the two ways going out of, onto Lake Street, or Jennings, connecting to Jennings, is the fact their main entrance comes out for the residents out into that area. You know, we, we did all the traffic studies initially, and we took a look at it, and it was approved, the site plan was approved for it to be two-way, but like a lot of things, once you begin, it becomes a fact, it's a work in progress, and you take a look at it, it's the concern of people coming out of New Village into that space, and somebody coming around a van, you know, to leave and not seeing it, so I think the compromise becomes, and we have the traffic light at Oak Street, so.
I hear something?
Yeah.
Coming out on, onto Ocean from there, and from Oak Street through Ocean, there should be a different kind of light, because on a Friday night, you're coming out on Oak, traffic is crazy. They are crazy for Saturday.
Well, that's what we'll see. Well, you know, and somebody asked a question earlier about how, we need to do some configuration at that light also, in terms of people stepping off the curb, when you come down a sidewalk that, we're going to have to look at it.
Right.
And it'll be a work in progress, as most of the year, a work in progress.
And Councilor Regan had a good idea also about, you know, putting, well, what you explained inside for the pedestrians.
Pedestrian barriers.
Right. Pedestrian barriers.
So you can't ride your bike.
Correct. You can't just carry them out from a corner.
You can walk out of the street, you've got to stop, and then move to the side.
Right.
You get funneled.
Adopt some of the pedestrian signs from the cities of New York.
Yep. Any other comments?
Yes, so that is a motion.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second.
Third.
Aye.
Okay.
Secondly, I'd like to request the approval to increase public safety director James Berberich's salary to $46,000, as for his approved 211 waiver from the New York State Retirement System. Now, when we hired Jim, apparently, you know, he was going to make more money, but since he couldn't, according to the law, we had to wait for the waiver, so once we got the waiver, now we, we put his.
Put his salary.
Salary, please.
So I'm on the phone with him last night, 11 o'clock last night.
Yeah, oh, he works day and night, weekends, I mean, the guy's non-stop, I mean, he.
He really is.
Called me and everything.
Tremendous.
And it's well deserved, I mean, he really, really does a great job. Jim really does.
Public safety is really.
Yeah.
Under his direction, it's come a long way. So that's a motion?
That's it.
All favor?
Aye.
It's okay.
And one last thing, I need the, the resolution approving the service award program list for all 2014 volunteer ambulance workers at the Patchogue Ambulance Company. And that's, you know, that's a LoSAP program through New York State.
Yeah, the LoSAP is the retirement program for both fire department and ambulance companies, and we have an obligation to the ambulance company to pick up their cost. So a motion to accept, presented?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Trustee Fur.
Um, Mr. Mayor, I have nothing tonight, but I would like to say something in, uh, Trustee Devlin's app.
Oh, good.
Because she was saying. Uh, it was a very exciting weekend in the arts scene in Patchogue this weekend. Uh, Plazamack had, uh, uh, an opera on Saturday morning, and, uh, The Life of Turner and Timbuktu on Saturday, and then on Sunday afternoon at four o'clock, they did Turner, and they had two, uh, very aged, famous, world, world famous artists, both of whom live here, uh, discussing, the, the movie Turner is about, uh, the famous British, uh, artist, I forget his first name, but very good movie, Mr. Turner, yes. And then, uh, the Arts Council had a, has a new show that went up on Saturday, and they had a reception, and with all the, I mean, there's, where, where, what is a more vibrant place in Patchogue? I mean, I could, I had trouble choosing where to go. You can't be everywhere, so it's really, a really good weekend. And I was sitting at Parabellum at two-thirty on, uh, Sunday after, this afternoon, there was a, a humongous stretch limo across the street parked in front of the library, and the, the crowd of people going to the theater was just amazing. If you didn't have a reservation at Parabellum on Sunday afternoon, you didn't get it, it's really good.
I think that went for a lot of places in town.
Yeah, it was a really good weekend, a lot of people.
They're all, all busy.
Yeah.
All weekend.
Did you have a good weekend?
Oh, yeah.
We have a fabulous weekend.
Ah, the sun is coming out.
Yeah.
Spring is here soon. It's been promised.
Rumor has it. And the council, Trustee Fur. That's all I have, Paul. Trustee Devlin.
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
Welcome back from wherever you are.
Do that right. Um, thank you.
Yes.
Board and guests, uh, as, um, Trustee Fur mentioned in his chamber report, they have changed the time of the, uh, five K parade, the parade is now going off at noon, and the five K, of course, will be five minutes before that, one to five. And I would like to appeal once again for volunteers, anybody out there, for the lineup, it's a lot of fun, you get a safety vest, you can take it home, and, uh, it's a, it's a great way to see the backside of a parade, especially.
Backside of the horse.